All right, I'd like to please call this meeting to order and to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you please join me.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's probably me's amount. If the clerk could, please help me with the roll call.
Debra Sheikine?
Here.
Deveraux?
Here.
Green? Lewis? McKinney? Robinson, present. Schwartz?
Okay, and moving to approval of the agenda, I have a few things before the board. One of them is just a communication from me with my updates is supervisor. And then we also have from Mr. Smiley, Mr. Lucas, a resolution authorizing the purchase agreement for the acquisition of the Birdsong Nature Preserve. And that is related to essentially the township allowing a purchase so long as we're not on the hook for any dollars associated with the purchase. But this is something that came on that I agreed to let Mr. Smiley, you know, speak to and have us take a look at based on the timing of a variety of fundraising efforts. And then also two items related to one clarification for personal overtime for particularly our utilities employees. And then also a new mechanism, or rather, one that has not been implemented in some time, a resolution for the approval of the overtime policies. With that additionally, I would like to move Resolution B 2025-68 to the end. Sorry, guys, our fire chief wasn't able to get here at the start of the meeting and asked me to move it to the end. So if we can move that. That is one related to the Safer Grant.
One question.
Yes, please.
So the items that you're presenting, are they for discussion or are we voting on them? Or where do you want them on the agenda?
I would like these to be under new business, please. And then one communication. Thank you. Is there a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda moves forward unanimously. And now moving to citizen participation. If there is an item on the agenda or something related to it that you'd like to speak to for up to three minutes, please join us at the podium and introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is TC of Riller Run Acres. I have three things I'd like to discuss, please. I would like to give an update for the Clay Hill Community Farmer Garden. It has been a small trickle to a good flow of traffic. I just want to let you know that it worked out pretty well for the residents for Danbury-Green-Sycamore Meadows area. There's been an odd request from the kids. The kids in that community specifically asked for oranges and also pomegranates. It's something that we don't grow. It was an odd feature to have at the farmer's market. I do want to oddly apologize because we grow things that's local. But when the kids wanted a request of something that they don't have normally, we brought that to the community. So the kids come over after school with their parents' permission to obtain oranges and also clementines and pomegranates. So I just wanted to share that with you. There was also a family that requested their son to come out. She had a grocery list and she purchased a lot of groceries from our farm stand, from the Clay Hill Community Farmer Garden. So it is a workable success from the local community. That is the update I wanted to give you for that one. So I want to thank you for partnering with us to help bring this to the community. The second one is that we had our ribbon cutting ceremony at Henry Ford Early Learning Center. It's a STEM school. And that ribbon cutting ceremony was a highlight to teach the preschool center kids about composting. It's something that we've been long trying to do is to teach the local residents about food waste and food monitoring. So we end up teaching at least 225 children from young five all the way up to first grade and also a group of 30 residents. It was an all-day event that was held last week. So even though it is in Ipsy Township, but it also helped supply the education component to Superior Residents also. So I want to thank the local community for that also. The third one is that we're on a campaign to ask the community to donate unused new lawn bags. Those lawn bags are used for specifically to help local residents that cannot afford lawn bags to put yard waste in them, but also to collect seeds and common milkweed pods. We have been on a campaign to collect common will weed, milkweed.
It's a tongue twister.
Pods. Thank you for the community. We so far have received at least 30 pounds of common milkweed pods. We put those into the lawn bag, let those dry out. We open them, separate them from the bad to the good, to the unusable. And we put those into areas where it can be composted in the community itself, the ones that is not usable. The ones that we do save and collect, we fold those up into the lawn bags, let those dry naturally for at least three to four weeks. And then we just open the bags up and naturally separate the seeds from the plumes itself. That is a community effort that we're trying to work on. So if anyone have extra milkweed pods that they would like to help donate and also lawn bags, we very appreciate it. Our goal is to collect 900 usable new lawn bags. So far, we have 175 lawn bags that has been donated for our cause. We're not here to profit from it, but we're here to share with the community as possible. So I just want to thank you for all the efforts that we have a partnership with the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Martha Kern-Bowkry. I'm one of your park commissioners. And I'm really just here to tell you that Saturday morning is pumpkin carving day. So please come to Norwood Park. Every kid gets a pumpkin until they run out. Last year we had 125 and I think they ran out at 1:15 and we had to cut off. But it's scheduled from 11:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. And we'll help the kids carve them or cheer them on as they're a parent and whatever helps. But please come. Yes. Norfolk. I may have missed.
I was like, where's Norwood?
I'm sorry. Norfolk. It's on Norfolk Drive in the Oakbrook subdivision.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dave Phillips, Cherry Hill Road. And I just wanted to say a few words about the Safer Grant. It's not clear to me what exactly the action is on the agenda. It says for fiscal year 2024, the application. And in the packet, the application date is already passed for that. It was July 3, 2025. The resolution is not real clear to me, so I'm not really sure what the action is that you're going to be taking tonight or proposing to take. But the one thing that was clear to me was it looks like it's going to create a large unfunded liability if you do approve the grant. And the grant is granted. According to the financial projections, it would require either a new millage or a special assessment. And that would probably fall on a future board. So that's kind of a rough thing to do, put that kind of burden on a future board. And I'm sure you discussed it well and there's probably more to the story than I know. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Brenda Baker, Ashton Court, here to speak about the community to promote Superior Township. We were a little bit late with our communication this week, or this month, I should say. So thank you for the extra trouble of receiving it at your seats this evening. It's the same format as usual, looks like this. And there are copies available for the audience if they are interested. And I'm just going to highlight a couple of the items that are on this month's report. The library display could not have been on here if we would have been on time. It just went up today. And I was able to have a copy on my computer and zoom into it. And I learned a lot more about the Birdsong Preserve than I knew. It's an excellent display. So as trustees, you can zoom into your copy of the infographic and do it that way. Or you can visit the library and see the whole display and especially the text part of it about some of the things that our Parks and Rec Department does in addition to some of the more widely known activities. I found it interesting. The other thing I wanted to point out about the Michigan Folks School Folk Festival, the Committee to Promote Superior Township was allowed to have a booth there. So we participated for the first time. And I just wanted to mention about the photo that they happened to feature when they put this together. There, that is our booth located on the Folks School grounds at the Michigan Folk Festival. And the people in the photo, that is me and that is Marjorie Dozy, the two people in the back. But the person in the foreground with the glasses, who is actually, this is a selfie that she took, that is Haneeen. She is the graphic artist that puts all this stuff together for us. And you may have seen her name, but that is Haneeen. And she puts these things together and also does a lot of the work on the social media, the Facebook page and so forth for the township. And a chance to find out what Haneeen looks like.
I know. It's exciting to see her away from the screen. Thank you for the update.
Good evening.
Hello. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor, Board of Trustees, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Bill Sowerby. I reside on Woodhill Circle here in the township. And my first question to you, though, is how many full-time employees does Superior Township have, approximately?
Please continue with your comments. Don't only don't do it back and forth.
25 or so? That's what I thought. I know it was under 30. So I'd like to address today Item 10, which is the second reading for Ordinance 198, which is the ordinance to establish a commission for setting salaries of elected township officials. First, I want to fully support that any township employee needs to be properly compensated and regularly revisiting COLA for those employees. Hourly wages, salaries is extremely important, whether it's on an annual basis or twice, you know, every other year, whichever. But that's extremely important. But what I want to express here is that in December of 2023, the Board of Trustees gave a pretty good-sized increase in salary, as much as 14% for some of the positions to this board. And which was sizable, not that it wasn't deserved. Now, I want to emphasize, everybody on this board works hard. You deserve it. You do a great job. This isn't about performance, but rather it's about how things get compensated. Then, when this board came in, one of your first acts in December of last year was to give yourselves a 2% increase. Not everybody voted for it, but the majority of the board did. And what is difficult for any township is when, or any elected body, is to how do they should properly compensate themselves. And it's my opinion that the board should not make the decisions on how they compensate themselves in any given year. So this compensation commission is an end around to get a board salary increase. Because we all know, once the commission votes and makes a decision on your salary, it takes, board of the size seven, it would take five members of this board to say, no, we reject that salary increase. And that's extremely difficult to do in any body. This is a community of 15,000 people. Taxable values and commercial, industrial, residential, farmland, is extremely low in comparison to the rest of southeastern Michigan townships, which are much larger. But your salaries are very comparable to communities that are five, six, seven times the population of Superior Township. Again, you all work hard. I'm here to suggest that you should not pass this compensation. Do not create one. That is your choice. The Township Public Act of the state allows you to do this, but doesn't require you to. You can set your own salaries. My suggestion is you're well compensated now. But if you feel that compensation needs to be considered in the future, make a decision prior to the next election, in the spring of 2028 or even in 2027. If you feel that a salary increase should occur, make a motion of this board to make that increase and put it upon the next Board of Trustees to receive that increase. Then myself and the other constituents in this township can vote and decide whether whoever is running for those positions deserves getting elected and receiving those positions. But please do not support this compensation commission. It's a bad decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Oh, good evening.
Good evening, thank, good evening, board. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Irma Golden and I live at 1585 Sheffield Drive. First, I want to thank you, Supervisor, for taking care of that couch, the oversight of getting rid of that couch on that corner that had sat there for about two weeks. Okay, so on tonight's agenda is Resolution 2025-71. It's a resolution to approve additional street lighting installation on Harris Road. Time and again, over and over again, residents have expressed concerns about safety in Geddes Ridge neighborhood due to the absence of streetlights. Just yesterday, I think it was, there was about 40 gunshots. And that was within the neighborhood. Approving more lights on Harris Road, however, where lighting was already installed within the last two years, while continuing to overlook the ongoing safety concerns of the Geddes Ridge residents is quite frankly, just tone deaf. We have to take care of the residents within the neighborhood, not putting more lights on Harris Road. All you have to do is just drive down it. They had the brightest lights. And we've had complaints about that before. Also, I would like to address an item included in the board packet under the assessors' report. It references to a Freedom of Information Act FOIA requests I submitted more than four weeks ago, which still has not been fulfilled. I have a copy of the original request and I will forward it to the board this evening. This FOIA request involves transparency and equitable treatment in relation to a vote taken by this board February 17, 2025. The majority of this vote as a group with two opposing votes from Clerk Robinson and Trustee Green. And Trustee Green, public statements and actions appeared retaliatory, represented a breach of confidentiality, and the use of a resident, John Maxim, who lives on Harvest Lane. A letter with no attempt to clarify, verify, or investigate were entirely unfounded. As board members, the use of authority or position to influence decisions and others to just fall in line, whether to discourage reappointment or punish someone for filing a complaint is unethical. If the intent was retaliation, then it was retaliation, plain and simple. So I just want to remind the board, and I hope you look into it. Under the Federal and State Freedom of Information Act, publicly, public bodies are legally required to respond to a FOIA request within a set period of time, and it's usually five days. It has been well over five days. It's been more than four weeks. And in case you want to know what public act, it is MCL 15.2231. Perhaps the township can shed light or the township attorney can shed light on your responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments in the audience or on Zoom? Okay, and with that, I'd like to close citizen participation. Thank you, everyone, for being here. And moving to supervisors' comments, I've submitted at the table some of the activities that my office has been involved in. It's something that I want to clarify. And I know that this also came up in social media was concern around where lighting was going. DTE any day should have a neighborhood plan to me for all of Geddes Ridge. Here is, we poked in a couple of other places that could have a little bit more coverage. And I know that there were concerns over gunshots that were heard in Geddes Ridge and a variety of other neighborhoods. The gunshots were coming from McArthur Boulevard. No one was injured and I'm working closely with the Sheriff's Office and making sure that bad actors are held accountable. So please know that I'm working very closely with Sheriff's Dyer's office. And two, we're developing a significant amount of community programming and forming strategic partnerships throughout the community to have stronger inroads within Danbury and Sycamore. And I will make sure that this is populated on social media. So as Tenajo and Alana bore anyone with my report, but it's the most urgent issue in our community and I thank you for bringing it up. Moving to presentations, we do not have any. And within the consent agenda, would the board like to pull any items within the consent agenda or receive and file items A, B, and C? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Receive and file. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is received and filed. No items are removed. And now moving to unfinished business, Ordinance Number 198, an ordinance to establish a commission for setting salaries of elected township officials. And this is the second reading. Is there a motion?
For just discussion. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Please.
So let me just say that I appreciate the comments that have been made in reference to Item 10, ordinance to establish a commission for setting salaries. I propose this ordinance as a means of accountability for the board, not due to any specific board action taken here or of previous boards, but as a way of looking forward. It was my intent and understanding that our staff are subject to our review and evaluation that I, you know, believe that it would be beneficial for this board to be set to that same standard. And having had conversations with fellow board members, haven't heard comments from the community, I believe that while my intent was to create an external form of accountability for this board, I'm not sure that that's what this ordinance is accomplishing as currently written. And so if there is no opposition, I would humbly ask to, I would withdraw the ordinance from consideration. Once it's already been written, but we can.
Clerk Robinson, what do you, what are you comfortable with?
Yeah.
A vote to withdraw it? So this is a vote to withdraw?
Vote to approve the, or are we voting to approve it? Because it's already been read in once.
I'm sorry. Can you say that once more?
So, sorry, just to clarify the motion. I'm, I move to approve Ordinance Number 198, ordinance to establish a commission for setting salaries of elected township officials.
Okay.
Second reading, excuse me.
Okay.
No, we're just voting.
Voting too.
Voting on it.
We can't remove it.
Right.
But Dana has withdrawn his support for the ordinance that he proposed, so I think.
Okay.
Schwartz?
Uh, no.
McKinney?
No.
Lewis?
No.
Green?
No.
Deveraux?
No.
Sheikine?
No.
I'm sorry, Debra Sheikine?
No.
Robinson? No.
Can I make one quick comment?
Please.
I just want to say that I thought that your intent around this was really good. Like, we've talked about it before. And I think that what you were trying to do, I really appreciate. And I think that there was, there were additional considerations that I wasn't aware of that I did some preliminary research on before tonight. And I do think that it presents some accountability issues as written. But I just wanted to say thank you because I know you put a lot of work into it and I think it was well done.
No, no, I mean, I appreciate that. Thank you for that comment. But, you know, as is, as democracy works, I, even in support of my own, you know, ordinance or something I put forward, I can also be convinced. And so, so thank you for the public comments. Thank you from the other board members who provided their feedback. And I'm happy to move forward. New business.
Thank you. Okay, moving to Resolution 2025-67, a resolution to approve audit service agreement, selection of auditor for fiscal years 2025 through 2028. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have some discussion.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Brian is here to speak on the audits request. So did you want to answer the questions or? Okay.
Okay, great. I actually didn't have a question.
Oh.
Yeah, it was, but I appreciate you making me aware that Brian is here to ask questions. Let me first just say that I really appreciate the criteria that was laid out for the call for proposals. I made it very clear and transparent for me to follow as far as, hey, here's Plant Moran's recommendations. Here's why. I mean, and for those of you that are online and can't follow along on the, on, through the board packet, I believe we received, is it seven? Seven or so applications where we narrowed it down to the top three. And based on, you know, certain evaluation criteria. And one, quality of references, representing 35% in your score, cost being 25%. And then frequency of working with Plant Moran, accounting for 40%. I would encourage everybody at home to review the board packets on page 93 of 327. And page 94, that includes the criteria and the rating scale that we use for that recommendation. So I just want to say, I think this is a very clear and transparent process. Made it really easy for me to come to a decision on this and just wanted to speak to that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's call the vote. Would you like to do a roll call, clerk?
Contract.
Yep, we should. Debra Sheikine?
And did we clarify who in the resolution we're voting for? Because I believe you laid out three options.
I did, for the recommendation order.
Okay, and so.
The first one is.
I think that we should specify which one we're voting for.
The one that was recommended.
So it'll be Gavbridge Company? Make sure we're on the same page.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yes.
Yes, I think so.
To approve the resolution.
So I, I move that we approve Resolution 25-28 to approve the audit service agreement for fiscal year 25-28. That's not the, that's the number I put to resolution. I'm sorry, that's actually contract term with Gavbridge and Company PLC as the township auditors for the years 2025 through.
Oh, don't you talk in your mics. I'm sorry.
2025 through 2028.
The fourth.
Do roll call? Yes, please.
Debra Sheikine?
Aye.
Deveraux?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
McKinney? Robinson, yes. Schwartz?
Yes.
It's unanimous. And B has been moved to the end of new business, which is the Safer Grant. And with that, we're moving to Resolution 2025-69, a resolution to appoint Brent Strong of Carlow-Wormman Associates as the hearing officer to administer Division 2 of the Blight Ordinance Dangerous Structures. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
If I could discuss, because I don't feel that this mission articulated perfectly why we're interested in making this motion. So essentially, this boils down to there's a dangerous building in the community. And I know Mr. Lucas is familiar with this as well. And in short, I have an additional summary. The hearing officer role that we're recommending be filled by Brent Strong is a result of the township needing to follow the dangerous buildings proceedings in the Blight Ordinance. In particular, we're looking to follow this procedure for 10264 East Avondale. The tenants have been evicted, the house was flooded and was posted as uninhabitable. There was a letter posted to the door and mail to the owners who live out of town on June 10 of 2025. There was a letter post to the door and mail to the owners who live out of town on June 10th of 2025. And they've also been tried to connect with them via phone and via email. Um, this is the next step in pursue court proceedings. This came at Mr. Lucas's recommendation. And so this is not, uh, Mr. Strong, we're trying to seek an additional staff person. We just need somebody who's not a township employee to sort of serve as the expert and be a part of the proceedings. Mr. Lucas, do you want to add anything else to that?
We, uh, we appoint somebody.
Uh, with the dangerous buildings, there's generally a hearing that's held with a hearing officer that's appointed. That hearing officer should be someone who is familiar with construction codes and construction, uh, methods. That person then hears it. There's a process that we go through under the ordinance. It'll come back eventually to township board for enforcement of, of his findings. And then from there we would go to court to get an order. And I always, I know that there's a lot of communities that go and do not bother with the court process, but based upon the fact that I've actually been involved in litigation where we have been, where another community was sued for tearing down a house without a court order. I, I just think it's worth our time to do that and to get a, uh, get a judge's approval on that. So that's the process that I follow.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
What's the address again?
The address is 10264 East Avondale.
East Avondale. That's in Bromley? Well, uh, you know, I looked at this when I was a supervisor. I didn't want to do it. It's another layer. Uh, also I thought it was like more efficient to go through the attorneys to do a straight out condemnation based upon our building inspector's condemnation of the property.
Well, that's, that's up to if the, the board feels comfortable in that going without going to court. That's fine. I just, uh, as I said, I have been involved in litigation before where we were sued uh, for having torn down a property and.
But I think a court order covers a multitude of problems and mistakes.
Yes, I agree. So I just, I just.
Mr. Green.
Sorry, I'm sorry, uh, Madam Supervisor. So I just want to clarify, your recommendation is that?
Well, my recommendation is number one, that we go through the process that's identified in the ordinance for, for, for blight, uh, for blighted properties. And then after we, he'll have a hearing before hearing officer, he has an opportunity to be heard. And then if I remember correctly, then it comes township board will then be given an opportunity to review that. He can come and make an appeal to the township board. And then after that, uh, file action to have the property torn down.
And establishing Brett Strong as the, the hearing officer in this matter would be the first step towards.
Yes, the hearing officer is somebody, as I said, that somebody who is familiar with buildings, familiar with the, the Michigan building code and can, um, hear the, hear the matter. That's why. For example, in another community, we have a, we have an engineer who works with a construction company who, who acts as our hearing officer in, in Lenawee County. We use him quite a bit in a number of communities. So it doesn't have to be somebody that we have an ongoing relationship with. It's just somebody that, that is knowledgeable in that area and can provide us with, uh, a basis.
Yeah, I, I generally want to follow the process, especially if the township has established it as closely as possible.
Yep.
For that reason, I, I wish to follow Mr. Lucas's advice.
Right, but that's an election of remedies, if you ask me, Fred. We have a remedy through the ordinance, we have a remedy through the other ordinance, which allows us to take the judicial way.
Yep.
Now, I wouldn't be opposed to this if all it was, we're doing was fact finding that we could then turn over to the attorney.
That's all it is. It's fact finding.
Well, I think the ordinance allows them to issue an order of demolition.
It does. It allows them order and issue a demolition. But if I remember correctly, I don't have the ordinance right in front of me. But what happens generally in these ordinances is that after the, the, the hearing officer makes a determination demolition, there's a, there is an opportunity to appeal that decision to the township board. And then once the township board makes, makes a determination, that's it. And then we move forward from there.
You move forward with the demo or you move forward with going to court?
We'll move forward to going to court.
Mr. Green?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah. Can, can you, um, discuss the legal liability if we weren't to follow this process as you outlined it?
Well, what happened before in that case is we tore down a, they tore down a building and we were sued. And we ended up having to, uh, you know, we ended up having to compensate them for the cost of the building that was torn down. They, they alleged due process violations. Frankly, uh, I didn't think the court was correcting it, but I don't want to take that chance again. That's my whole position. Cause it's a relatively simple process. We filed, we filed the complaint. They don't, they don't respond. It's generally default and we'll just move forward.
Are you ready to call the vote?
No, I ask you one question.
Okay.
Have you got a report from somebody that this is in fact a dangerous building? Because this building can be more than 20 years old. And you know, it was built 20 years ago or so.
I think we have a report from, um.
Michelle Marin.
Right.
Together.
We asked.
An analysis.
Right. We asked for an analysis of that before we move forward the hearing officer stage.
Okay. That's fine.
Thank you. Okay, call the vote, please.
Can I ask one more question? What's, what are you recommending? Cause you're going to be handling a lot of this.
I recommend following Mr. Lucas's advice.
Which is yes or no on this?
I, I support it.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, calling the vote. Um, I don't think that we need a roll call.
Oh, just so you all.
Yes, please.
You're aware, one of the things that when you do tear down a building, one of the other things we get in the court order is an order allowing us to assess the cost of remediation against the property. So that would.
Later in the agenda.
Pardon?
We have an example of that later in the agenda.
Wanted to let you know.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Okay. Calling the vote. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Well, I think it's important supervisor that if this goes forward, when this process is complete, that you make sure that it lands at Fred Lucas's office so that he can file a lawsuit and make, protect us from any liability.
Fred and I are pretty consistent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Um, can I make one small comment? Um, just on the submission.
Okay.
Um, so there was obviously a lot of background information that was really helpful for us to know. Um, so just a request, um, I don't know if it's, you know, for everyone generally and also for the clerk's office. Like when there's not background information provided on something like this, um, it'd be great if we can include it because I know our residents are reading their packets. Um, so we have the ability to ask questions, but um, our community doesn't.
I noticed that in that situation as well. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Moving to, uh, resolution 2025 70, resolution to approve Dixboro Schoolhouse renovation project. If Claire Martin, if there's a motion on the table.
So moved.
Is there support?
Or?
Claire, if you could just please, um, come to the podium and give a little bit of background about the process that we went through and how we've landed where we are.
Sure. So, um, back a few months ago, the supervisor had approached us about potentially finding ways to move, uh, the schoolhouse project forward. There was some interest in, um, adding a restroom, an ADA accessible restroom to that space, um, so that the public can use it. And she provided, uh, some drawings from the last architect that had worked on, worked on the project, who has since retired. Those drawings had several projects that had already been completed. Um, and so in brainstorming ideas to keep this project at a somewhat lower scale, um, we.
And lower cost, as low cost as possible.
Yeah, as low of cost as possible, knowing that we only had, you know, about $70,000 total to work with or less. We suggested to her that the, the costs that it would take to update those drawings, um, bring them into like our architecture group, own those drawings and basically reproduce them from scratch because the architect had since retired. Um, it was not, uh, it didn't make sense for the scale of the project. Um, and so we suggested that a way that they could move forward with it was to have, um, a site meeting with those drawings and a couple of contractors, to solicit quotes rather than going out for bid, because going out for a full public bid with drawings that are not, that are, that have some work that has been done and some work that we don't think would be, uh, moving forward with the project. Didn't, we would have gotten so many questions, um, that it, it wouldn't have made sense to do a public bidding process. So that's why, um, we suggested to approach it this way, let the supervisor's office kind of handle the project, um, from a, a management perspective, to save cost on, on our fees, um, and to let most of the costs go towards the actual renovation of the building.
Thank you.
So can I ask one question? Claire, is this based on the, the prints that were from an architect that we just see maybe a year and a half ago?
Yeah, Dick Mitchell's.
Uh, and I think it was, it was probably closer to like five years ago. I think that those drawings were created, yeah. And so it had things on there like septic, which was already done. The well that was already done, the shed that was already done. And so like even in just like working with those couple of contractors, there were a lot of questions on, um, you know, what was the actual scope? Um, and so that's why it was important to approach it in this manner.
Okay. Mr. Green?
Um, I just want to speak to costs with this project. So the, the, the cost associated with, excuse me, I'm, excuse me. Um, the cost associated with this project, the majority of it is going to be paid by, paid for by grants, um, with $2,252 coming out of general fund.
Unless I can fundraise for that as well. I'll work on it. Yeah, but almost exclusively, you know, a, a private donation, uh, from a series of $25,000 that went to the Dixboro Builds Green. And then the 40,000 approximately that came in from Hyundai, which should cover essentially all of the costs.
And, and I will just add too, that the summit company that is, um, who the supervisor proposed as the, um, low bidder on this was, uh, they also did the restroom build out at the, um, fire station. And so they're, it's very similar kind of.
Quickly, then in terms of their background, they're doing a rehab MBL right now. They rebuilt the farmer's market in Canton. Um, there's a personal connection where the owner, his wife used to work at the general store across the street and he doesn't live too far away. So they, he knew what I was working with in terms of financing and I, I think that's why you see such a big difference in terms of the process. So I stayed with the two proposals, is that there was a significant interest in pursuing the project from one vendor rather than the other. All right, shall we, Mr. Schwartz?
Make a comment. Uh, this is kind of the culmination of work that really started in about 2015 when we went to, um, Destination Ann Arbor and Brenda helped us out on this and Roland Sizemore and got us grants for, uh, establishing that as a community attraction for purposes of bringing tourists in. And so it was funded all the way through and we even have a well and a septic there and we don't have a bathroom. So we're not even using the two assets that we have paid for.
And we're obliged to put the bathroom in per agreement with the Dixboro Builds Agreement and the church.
So I think that this will get us a certificate of occupancy in the case we want it to rent it out or have some other uses for it.
I've been talking through Destination Ann Arbor about getting that on the circuit for rentals and a variety of other groups. So I think, I think we're on our way. They love it. Yeah. And they also gave us a $10,000 grant for a superior branding campaign and they're very interested in working with our community and highlighting it more, becoming more a part of the story of the county. I'm sorry?
They have been for a number of.
Yeah, they're great.
I'd just like to point out that four sevenths of the money that was collected here that will be going to the project, 40,000 was collected by our supervisor from Hyundai Motor Corporation.
And, and one more note on the cost too, is that there were, you know, several other priorities. I think you mentioned one through four. And in the interest of cost, you've selected only one. I mean, there is still other, you know, aesthetics kinds of projects to be done in there that are included in those plans that we can hopefully pick off in the future. Um, but just, you know, there's been a significant, uh, effort.
Yeah, as, as folks see, you know, good things happening, hopefully they'll want to chip in as well. Shall we call the vote?
Deveraux?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Debra, Yekine?
Yes.
Robinson, yes. Lewis?
Yes.
McKinney? Schwartz?
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Moving to resolution 2025 71, a resolution to approve additional street lighting installation on Harris Road. Is there a motion?
Move the resolution?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Mr. Green?
So in reviewing this resolution, um, the first thing that stuck out to me was that the lights would go on Harris Road. Um, and I know you spoke to this earlier. I just want to have further discussion here. So, so are, are you in DTE in conversations right now to, to, to put additional lighting in the neighborhoods? In addition to lighting on Harris Road?
Yes. Yes. And I wish that I had that in front of us today or that I could have at least walked it on, but I don't have it in hand yet. But they're looking at outfitting the entire Gettys Ridge neighborhood. When they first came up with a silly suggestion that I found very disheartening, that I won't reference again, but you know what I'm talking about. They had also looked at outfitting Harris and considering that there are some dimmer areas, I know that on the opposite side of the street, that there is some light that's coming from the library. There is a little bit of light that's coming from the fire station and I've driven it. I don't think that it would hurt to amplify this area a bit further, especially considering, you know, some of the concerns that have been coming up in the community and some of the, you know, security issues that we've been staying so close by. Uh, but this is something that is security based, can come through the law fund and is separate from what I hope to have for you all next month.
Okay, that was, that leads to my next question.
Yes.
Has DTE provided you with a timeline on when we can expect a layout for the Gettys Ridge?
I was expecting it any day. I was hoping that I would have it today for you guys.
Can you? I'm sorry, does anybody else have any questions?
No.
Well, I have a question that you're asking trustee Green are, um, clarifications that I would have wanted to ask. Please continue.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, okay, so hopefully within the next month or so, we should see a, a layout for the Getty or Gettys Ridge subdivision. Is there, has there been any, um, discussion around, um, costs affiliated with that or no?
I haven't seen a good cost estimate. And I, I think that there are ways to consider how involved you want the lighting to be, if you want to be comparable to what's across the street in Brookside. Or if you want something that is more based just from security or outfitting the entire neighborhood, but they're working on outfitting the entire neighborhood in the proposal. Mr. Schwartz?
Just want to make a comment. So for purposes of the people who weren't here last year or the last term, the library came to us when the library opened and said there wasn't enough lighting down there.
Yeah.
So we did go to community planning and they provided us with a sheet when they did install and we did pay for the lights that are there now. Those lights were installed based upon their subdivision plan where you have one house after another, after another, after another. This particular section of land, you have the library and then you got a thousand feet of unoccupied property and basically woods and, you know, kind of different kind of, uh, territory or land than you'd find in a typical subdivision. So that's why they came back to us, the library and said, can you fill in the gaps? We need more lighting. A lot of it, I don't think it's safe walking through those by the woods. And I think it's totally reasonable.
Okay. Thank you for your comment.
Right. Um, can I follow along?
Please.
So I, I appreciate, um, you and DTE working to, as you kind of have outlined, preparing a plan for Gettys Ridge, that you also identify this area of need on Harris. I just want to ensure that if we revote on this resolution today, that we will get a plan.
You have my word.
For Gettys Ridge.
It's separate. They do.
Okay, you know, because I, what my first, my first concern when I first read this is I just was like, okay, this is not what the residents asked for. And so while I appreciate it and I understand the need, I want to make sure that what residents have asked for is, is getting done. And so I'm going to take you to word that there, there will be a, a follow resolution to this.
Hope to get it to you before the next meeting.
And if, if there's not, me and DTE are going to have a nice conversation.
Good luck.
I, I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment too. And I, I want to thank the sheriff's office as well. The guys that are primarily on McArthur Boulevard, they went out a variety of nights in the community and were giving me feedback on where they didn't think there was enough lighting, where we needed more security. And they pinpointed, you know, in Washington Square, near Washington Square, throughout Oak Brook, like where there were lights out. And I sent those messages over to DTE. And two, I think that's why our special assessments are so wonky because we have so many new additions into our neighborhood lighting. But this, this has been a long process and involved a lot of conversations and help from some really nice partners, referring to our sheriff's office. Yes.
So, uh.
Mr. Schwartz?
Uh, to answer you, uh, Dana, about the length.
Your mic.
Answer you about the length of time. So we did, uh, Harvest Lane, uh, Washington Square, Panama. And from the time that we put in the request to community planning, to the time that the lights got installed, like four months. That was typical.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shall we call? Thank you. Shall we call the vote? Since this is a contract, let's do a roll call.
Lewis?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Robinson, yes. McKinney? Schwartz?
Yes.
Deveraux?
Yes.
Debra Shakine?
Yes, please. Okay, it's unanimous. Moving to Resolution 202572, Resolution to Approve Snow Maintenance Services Contract with Conklin Landscaping. Is there, is there a board? Call the vote? Okay. Can we take your roll call?
Debra Shakine?
Aye.
Deveraux?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
McKinney? Robinson, yes. Schwartz?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Moving to G, Resolution 202573, A Resolution to Award Contract for the Court Order Demolition of Structures Located at 4745 Napier Road. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Now, I just have a question.
Yes.
Was this the, was this the additional, was this referring to?
Yeah.
Okay, so how, how is this process was different than what was just?
So I've mostly caught this process on the backend and, Fred Lucas is, not Fred, but one of his partners has been working in part with her, primarily with her building inspector. But this has gotten to the point where this did go through the courts and there was a court order for demolition. The property, uh, does have an appointed receiver and what you see here is two, are two estimates for the demo and ultimately the township will not be on the hook for the demolition costs. Do you want to add? I know it is, you saw this for years, yeah.
You know, last year, maybe a little longer, and, uh, property was condemned. We ended up going to court on it and the owner of the property, he paid for some of the removal of the, of the property and, but then he ran out of money. I don't know, he went to California. And so since we had the case already pending and we elected that remedy of going to court as opposed to creating a dangerous building, uh, agency to do the, the work, uh, it finally went, I guess, probably Fred's office took it to court and got the order for demolition in it. And so it is a pit. It needs to go. It's bad.
Yeah, it's, it's unsavable. A team went in and did an analysis and the footings, the structure and the foundation are totally unsalvageable and I, I went by the structure again over the weekend and it's, it's necessary. Ms. Deveraux?
Yeah, I'm just curious. So I love what you just said, that the township will ultimately not be on the hook for the cost. Those are great words. I'm curious, um, can you just briefly explain, explain how that works?
Sure. So since it seems that we are on the trajectory to pay for this, initially the, the court had it so that if the house is currently for sale, if somebody was to purchase the property, they would be on the hook for the demo. The house is still for sale. Nobody has purchased it. Essentially, we're going to have a lien on the property and will need to be repaid when the property, you know, moves to whoever the future owner will be.
Okay, and if the property owner just holds it indefinitely?
They're not able to. They're required to sell it.
Okay, they're required to sell it. Okay.
Mr. Lucas, do you want to clarify anything?
Oh, that's good.
Sure.
Curious.
Yeah.
Come on up to the mic. Come on up to the, come on up to the mic.
Your love.
I want to hear your words, Fred.
Get your roller skates.
I'll be real fast. Uh, what happens, it goes on a tax roll. Once it goes on a tax roll, if they don't pay it, it becomes a delinquent and then it goes to the, to the, uh, tax sale.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
And once that's sold, we'd get.
And any, and it'll go on a tax sale and that bill is added on just like any of the other taxes are.
Okay, great. So it sounds like there's a few layers of accountability to make sure that we definitely don't end up with.
And two, it's coming out of the general fund. It will come out of the building fund.
Thank you.
There are ultimately, we'll put a tax lien on it if it's not paid. Then it goes to the county, then the county settles up with the treasurer and they send us that money. So we get it right away. County ends up doing the collecting.
All right, shall we call the vote? And since it's a contract, we'll do a roll call.
Mm-hmm. Schwartz?
Yes.
Robinson, yes. McKinney? Lewis?
Yeah.
Green?
Yes.
Deveraux?
Yes.
Debra Shakine?
Aye. Okay, it's unanimous. Moving to, um, the motion to approve special assessments for the 2025 winter tax bill.
Second.
All right, shall we call the vote?
Debra Shakine?
Aye.
Deveraux?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yeah.
Green?
Yes.
Robinson, yes. McKinney? Schwartz?
Yes.
Okay, and now.
Back to B.
Let's go back to B, please, which is Resolution 202568, A Resolution to Approve the Fiscal Year 2024 FEMA Safer Grant Program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, discussion.
Okay.
So first, let me say, um, thank you to the chief and, and his team for putting together a fantastic grant. And to clarify the, the question I was asked earlier from the audience, so my understanding of this is that FEMA has awarded us this grant and we have to accept it. Is that?
That is correct.
Right, so. No, I understand.
They're approve or deny.
What we're, what we'll be voting on today is to accept versus not accept to answer your, your question. So, um, you know, I, I spoke to the, the chief earlier today, um, and I just want to say like, again, you know, great job getting the grant. I'm allowed, this was a very competitive grant, um, and I, you know, want to say that I really appreciate all of the work that has been done. Here's where my concern is, and I, I relate this to the chief. Based on what was presented in our packet, uh, if we were to accept this grant and move forward the process of hiring all six firefighters, we would not have the funds to sustain them. So let me just like kind of back up for a second and explain how this grant is operating. Um, and for those of you at home who are maybe following along, it's listed in the grant, so just in the resolution, whereas under the fiscal year 2024 Safer Hiring Activity Grant recipients are required to contribute 25% of the actual personnel costs in years one and two, so the Safer Grant will, would cover, cover the majority of the cost in years one and two. But in, uh, in 65% of those costs in year three, uh, with federal funding cap at 75% of the usual annual cost of the first-year firefighter, um, in years one and two and 35% in year three. So essentially as, um, as we bring folks in and as the grants goes to expire, uh, we would then be responsible for funding, um, those officers moving forward.
That's correct.
Um, so here, here are some things that I've taken note of, um, and chief, like at any point, feel free to make the case. Right now, based on our previ- our last working session, I believe, actually, I think it's noted that we probably need to do a fire truck. That's one thing. Uh, Fire Station Two, um, is also in really bad shape. And.
Yeah, so if you've seen the projection, just for the audience and for the board, I did work with Plant Moran to get a handle on how this would project over multiple years, considering what our current millage rate is, what it would take to finance a truck. And this also excludes that there's likely going to be a public act in the next five to seven years at a maximum for a second station. And so although, you know, we have been bringing on two new firefighters, we're looking to bring on a third. I do have concerns over expanding our growth so significantly and essentially nearly doubling the size of what our ships look like, as well as the size of our facility at Station Two currently. I don't know that it's comfortable for so many people. And so although it's fantastic that we did get this nod from FEMA and we had a successful grant, I personally am not comfortable with it and I think that's where you're getting as well.
Well, I, I want to have the conversation. I mean, I think, and I think the points that you, you make are absolutely valid. Um, I do think in recognition of the work that our firefighter, that our chief has done, but also so that the public is aware. Here is what happens if we don't accept this grant, here's what happens if we, if we do accept this grant. Uh, and you, you, you spoke on some very valid concerns, some other things that I'm concerned about, but this grant doesn't necessarily help right now, is that like, for example, Fire Station Two was closed today, right?
It was closed for 12 hours today, yeah.
And why is that?
No staffing available to take the overtime.
So, and that's because there's no longer a law requiring mandated overtime?
Correct.
That's because we're following it, but in addition to that, we are still hiring. We brought in
Right.
applications for a third individual and we've just brought in two more over the past couple of months that are in their training phase.
Yeah, absolutely. Would that significantly cut back on that problem?
With the six additional firefighters?
No, I mean, with, if we were, the, the two, uh, young men who we just hired now and then hopefully a third in the future, would that significantly cut back on?
50% probably.
Okay, um, and then, uh, and I'm sorry, y'all, I'm, I'm no, no, I'm not trying to filibuster, so if anybody has any, has any additional points, please feel free to jump in.
The lines are on TV.
Uh, yes, I know, I know. Here's my, here's the, here's just where it's, I'm going to just sum it up. Here's my biggest concern. What we be doing by accepting this grant here today is essentially taking a gamble, a significant one. And what we essentially be proposing to the residents of Superior Township is, do you feel comfortable raising your taxes? I mean, because that's, that's what this is going to ask, right, is to put forth an additional millage to help cover the cost. Because right now, based on the projections, we don't have that, those funds available.
And, and two, and, and considering of what your concerns are about closures, we still have the opportunity to slowly hire and to be thoughtful about how we're staffing and avoiding Station Two. And that's too, why considering, you know, this no longer adhering to forced overtime that we began bringing in more folks over the summer and have been going through this process.
So there will be an additional plan to continue hiring over the next few years, even without this grant?
If we're still having staffing issues, that's my want for sure. Yeah.
Can I, I wrote a three-page document. Can I read this to, to the board and the people in the audience?
Sure.
Um, I'm hereby this, here this evening in support of the staffer, Staffing of Adequate Emergency Response Grant Known as Safer. This is a grant EMW 2024 FF 01513, which was applied for in June 2025. And on 25 December, uh, September 2025, the fire department was notified of the approval of the award for the amount of the federal resource being $1,431,548.78 and the township share of $889,876.74 for a total of $2,321, um, $2,321,417.52. This is a three-year grant of hiring six firefighters. We have until October 24th to give FEMA an answer as to if we accept or deny the grant. History of Staffing Levels Within the Fire Department. In 2015, the fire department had a staffing level of three firefighters on duty per shift. This staffing level was found to be inadequate and unsafe for firefighters. In 2017, Safer Grant application was written and awarded for three additional firefighters to increase the staffing at a total cost of $1,152. This grant was awarded for three years. In 2021, another Safer Grant was applied for and was turned down by FEMA for inadequate, inadequate requesting of staffing and also due to lack of FEMA funds. In 2025, the township board to hire three additional firefighters for a total of fire, five firefighters per shift. Problems Facing the Fire Department in the Future. Current staffing levels are not maintained due to vacations, sick or personal days. Personnel are burned out on overtime and no longer can be forced to work the overtime per state law. Therefore, Station Two has been closed several times, either 12-hours or 24-hour shifts. Oftentimes, shifts are down to three or two personnel. Retirements currently within the three years of this grant, uh, there will be two firefighters eligible for retirement. Millage, at the end of 2026, the fire department millage will be up for renewal or for an increase. We have a union contract negotiation as the current contract will expire at the end of 2026. Replacement of Fire Apparatus. The last fire engine that was purchased was in 2015. The current fleet is aging and is in need of replacement. The cost of a fire engine today is approximately a million dollars and two years to build. Replacement of Fire Station Number Two. Currently, the building is 50-plus years old and is no longer cost-effective to be maintained. Benefits of the Safer Grant. The additional firefighter staffing would increase the level to seven firefighters per shift, which would be added safely to the measures of the firefighters. Reduced overtime and save from not having Fire Station Two closed. This would also increase our ISO rating for homeowners insurance. Increase on additional personnel on emergency scenes. My end remarks is the Safer Grant is a competitive grant that we competed for with other fire departments throughout the United States and its territories. Superior Township Fire Department since 2015 has received over $3 million in regional grants as well as fire department grants from FEMA. Uh, if you refuse this grant award, there's the possibility that the fire department may not receive another Safer Grant Award. And this is found out during peer review sessions at FEMA. We have been successful for many years with grants. I am hoping that the Board of Trustees takes a serious look at the award package and to help with the future of the fire department to protect our citizens and their property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I would just like to add that I have, I know most of us have taken a very serious look at this and I have had dozens of conversations with staff, with peers, to get a hand on what the needs are and how that relates to what we're asking of the public and what's in the public's interest. Two, I just, I want to also add that it's unfortunate that there is a federal government shutdown as I cannot get a hold of FEMA. So currently, if there was an opportunity for me to see if we could amend this to two or three individuals, that conversation can't be had right now. But I would also like to suggest that should that opportunity arise, once the federal government opens, I think that could be an interesting opportunity to reconvene on this grant and would immediately want to host a special session. Additionally, in terms of thinking about eligibility of our firefighters that are up for retirement, there are three to four that are coming up shortly. However, just because they're eligible doesn't necessarily mean that they're ready to go. And two, because we are looking at vacation time and we're looking at sick time related to our current contract with our union, given where things are, now considering where the forced overtime is, considering where our hiring might be going, there are ways to be more clever and engage with our union and how to avoid these brownouts that we're having at Station Two. But those are a few other things that I want to point out. I would just like, Ms. McKinney?
I would like to just comment that in the past, we have gotten Safer Grants and they were very successful. Um, I had an opportunity to speak with, uh, the chief and at that time, chief, I was, you know, really excited about it. And I had a chance to do a little investigation and talk with some of my peers and community people. And right now, there's so much uncertainty about what's going to happen. And I definitely don't want to have to raise taxes for this, um, for the firefighters. So right now, I would just wish we had had more discussion about it, the board and with you. And, um, so right now, I'm not comfortable with this grant. It's just too much uncertainty.
Well, one of the thing with the government shutdown, to our advantage, we can extend that deadline date.
Right.
The October 24th?
Yes.
To what?
Because come October 24th, if they're still shut down, we can't give them a yes or no. So there is the opportunity to extend our deadline and just give them a reason that we needed more time because our answers weren't answered with the federal government.
Mr. Schwartz?
Because we can't get on the FEMA website, the, um, lady that's part of our regional grant from FEMA is not answering her phone or emails. It just says they're closed because of the shutdown.
And just like Mr. Phillips commented, we definitely don't want to have to increase taxes and no one wants that.
Or lay people off after three years.
And, you know, are we sure that the firefighters are going to retire? Because we're depending on that retirement to, to fund the new firefighter.
Right, well, the way it would normally flow is if they retire, if we have two guys retire tomorrow and we have the Safer Grant, two of those Safer Personnel will fall into that position.
Right, I understand.
And I'd have to hire two more for the Safer Grant to fill those vacancies. So that's how it's, that's how we've done it in the past.
Well, right now, again, it's just too much uncertainty for me.
Mr. Schwartz?
Chief, uh, are we?
Chief, uh, are we have to say yes or no to the whole grant? Can we pick and choose? Could we say, well, maybe two or three would be acceptable and we could accept two or three under those terms? Or is it all six or nothing?
In other people that have written grants, they said no.
And, and in fairness, um, and re- reviewing the packet, even if we were to amend it to three, we would not have the funding. Based on if I, if I reviewed that correctly, so.
I think we would have the funding for it without raising taxes.
Well, I'm just operating off of the information that was provided to me in the packet, so.
Are you looking at the taxable value? Are you considering taxable value when you said that you think we would have the funding?
Are you looking at the projection that was provided?
Yes, I'm talking to you.
I am taking into consideration the growth of the township trending over the last ten years, expected to trend to the next three to five years. We'll be seeing five to six percent increase. If we were to dedicate some of that increase, we could afford, you know, that, that, we could afford a few, but, you know, six would require a raise in taxes.
Um, I have some additional questions regarding services and brownouts. Um, chief, can you, what, what areas are most significantly impacted due to the brownouts, um, with Station Two?
What areas?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So like, who, who would be most likely to not receive services?
Well, folks would still receive services.
Yeah, they still receive services, but it would be limited.
Yeah.
You know, if, if a longer response time.
That's, that's the question.
They would be coming from Station One.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay, yeah, trustee Deveraux.
Yeah, just one question on that. Um. Do we, so we have mutual aid agreements with other townships, right? So is it, is, I just wanna double check, is it a certainty, like that people would have longer response times or is it an assumption?
It's a certainty.
Yeah, they definitely, we have data that shows that when Station Two is closed, that the response times are longer, even with mutual aid agreements.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So I just.
Mutual aid would even be longer.
Okay.
So if you take Ann Arbor Township, if they're coming from Goss Road and they have to go to MacArthur Boulevard. Their time would probably be ten minutes more than just a two minutes response from Station Two.
Okay. That's helpful.
So. I've been wrestling back and forth with this for the last week or so, um, and definitely since we got the packet. Um, and I think. Again, my biggest concern is that. If, I have no problem putting the question on the ballot, right? Um, as far as like a millage.
Mm-hmm.
Putting the question on the ballot, because ultimately the voters are the ones who decide. Here, the, the concern however though, is that essentially what we're doing is. Um, as the governing body of this township would be asking is, hey, residents of Superior Township, you're responsible for this, these six firefighters.
I think that.
Their livelihoods.
Yeah.
Uh, so you can vote no on the millage and these six firefighters are gonna be laid off. Or you can vote yes. Um, I, if, if this, if, if the money was already there and we had a millage, I would feel better about it. Um, and I'm really, I'm really, I'm looking for something here to grab on to, chief. I re- I really am like, and I think. Where I'm leaning is I would like, if, if, because there is a federal government shutdown.
We can amend it.
Is there a possibility for us to postpone this item? Rather than take a vote and see if we can get some of the questions answered from FEMA?
And see if I can.
Negotiating.
Down to two or three.
Chief, it would seem that if the government's closed for a month, then we're gonna get to November twenty-fourth.
We don't know that for sure.
We don't know that for sure.
Don't know that for sure. Okay, nothing's come across.
Cause right now, the yes or no is done on the FEMA website and it's shut down, so.
Theoretically, if the government opens back up tomorrow, they, or rather, on October twenty-third, they could expect a response that day.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't.
The other thing I wanna tell everybody is between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, our run volume increased by twenty-four percent. And it's constantly rising. It's going up more and more. Um, the, the end of this year, I'll have a better handle on what our run volume is. But, um, it's, it's increasing. You know, our EMS services are, are really increasing, especially with our elderly out there. Uh, we're seeing more, uh, lift assist, flip and falls and things like that. Yes.
Chief, this would take us up to twenty-one firefighters, right? If we did them.
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Where would, where would we house all the firefighters?
Well, you gotta remember, there, there would be four at Station Two. And then three at Station One. So they don't each have their own bed. They have their own lockers, but they, they would, I shouldn't say share beds, but they strip their bed and the next guy, you know. Cause no fire station has, no firefighters have their own beds except ours. And because of the manpower levels we currently at, so they would have to, you know, share the beds.
But Ms. McKinney, I'm sorry, but, but to that point, with the living quarters and the lockers, I think that those things are more easily rotated. But my concern candidly is where the living room is, where the, the kitchen is. Where these guys spend such a significant amount of time. I don't know that those quarters can easily accommodate four people. Mr. French, you wanted to share something?
Um, yeah, so. Um, we, staffing has been an issue here since I've been here. I started here in nineteen ninety-eight as a part, a part-time paid-on-call firefighter. There were two full-time firefighters, one at each station. We had roughly about fifteen to twenty paid-on-call that came back when, when it was needed.
And we had seven thousand residents.
Correct. As, as the residents have gone up, the staffing really hasn't kept up with it. Um. I too have huge concerns about the funding that I've expressed multiple times. Um. I think. It's a huge thing if we get it. It, it's a, it's a, it's a big deal. Um, it's kind of a big deal if we don't accept it. Departments that haven't accepted grant, uh, accepted grants have been basically blacklisted with an asterisk not by their name and they haven't been allowed. Eh, access to funding anymore. The chief's number for his grants were a little, little south. Um, we got a million-dollar ladder truck on a grant. We've probably got closer to five million dollars in equipment on grants. Um. I just did some quick numbers in the back. Our SCBA's were bought on a grant and in five years, we have to replace them because they're out into life. Today, they're about fifty-five hundred dollars apiece. Um. If we don't get a grant for that, we have to start replacing those slowly over time. Uh, a fire engine is between eight hundred and a million dollars. We got a grant to replace our ladder truck, right? So I, I understand the, the not wanting to raise the taxes on the residents. That's, that's one of the things that I don't think anybody at the fire department is, got it, more, more, more. I think. Uh, we, we're, we do our best to be fiscally responsible. And I think that, uh, having a plan in place helps that. Um, for about ten years, I've been pounding the table for a capital improvement plan or millage and I've been ignored. So here we are.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so. It's, it's your decision. I mean, I'm sure I haven't done anything to, to sway you, but I, I understand your concerns. Um, just understand that our staffing is lower than it should be currently. The three, the two additional people will help once they're through. The third one coming on will help. That's definitely a help. And if it's the board's position that looking further into the future and, and hiring more people. It might be something that we can work with, but just understand that the grant is important and we, we do need it. However, I do understand everyone's concern.
I wanna flag two other things. Thank you for your thoughtful words. Um, one is that for the SAFER grant, it does have a unique peer review team that things like engine and other equipments wouldn't have the same eyes on it. And there's nothing in writing that says if you don't accept this, that you are on the bad guy list with FEMA. Um, additionally, I, I want to flag, um, I'm sorry, I lost my thought for a moment, but I hope it'll come back to me. Ms. McKinney.
Is it possible for us to have more discussion? I think this board, we need to have more discussion.
I'm ready to call the vote. And I, I, I would, I'm sorry, Ms. McKinney, I, I would propose that once the federal government opens back up, that there's still an opportunity, since we haven't hit no on the button to FEMA. That we reach out to them and see if we can do some sort of amendments and if we can, I'll immediately call a special session.
Okay.
So I, I just wanna, so and random supervisor, our respects are right to call a question. I just wanna make sure, so we would be, if the question was called, it would be to accept or deny this, right?
As it is.
As it is. And I just, I wanna make sure that. If we were to accept these dollars and those officers were hired, then is, is there, um. Is there any type of, uh, language in here that states that, um, because they were hired with grant dollars that they had, that they could not be laid off or?
You got my other thought.
Was that the other thought?
With this, with this grant, there have been, I believe, uh, an additional year protection, uh, for firefighters hired under SAFER. Two, there's the issue of whether, and it's not within this grant, from what I understand. But two, you know, going through this process of bringing on new firefighters and seeing what our applications look like, the question of whether we can get six qualified folks within the hundred and eighty-some days that. We're obligated to is also a tricky undertaking and how lenient FEMA might be in terms of clawbacks. Should we not need our obligations is, is also a question mark for me. Ms. Deveraux?
Just wanna clarify that last point. So if we are unable to hire six additional firefighters within a hundred and eighty days, we are in violation of the grant?
Yes.
Okay.
And how is the application process looked so, and, and cycles passed?
Well, right now, we just, we recently closed on September twenty-second and we got six applications.
Okay, how long was that application period open for? We just recently, we recently closed the application.
It stayed open for thirty days. So we can re, repost it. You know, we can finish out this, this grant applicant, not grant application, but the application process with the firefighters to hire our third one. And then we can repost it and state that it's under a SAFER grant.
And so, sorry, last question and I'll let us end here. Um. Again, given that there is a federal government shutdown, is there absolutely no? I would, I would like to make a motion to postpone. Um, the vote until. The federal government reopens.
Ms. Deveraux?
Here's my concern with that. I like it.
Mm-hmm.
Like it a lot. In theory, my concern is that if.
It reopens.
The government opens, I don't think they're gonna be overly, uh. Accommodating to the fact that we didn't make a decision. Like, so I'm, so I'm worried that they're gonna, they're gonna push for a decision.
There are, there are other departments that have a deadline.
Yeah.
SAFER grant, like maybe today.
Yeah.
And they can't give FEMA yes or no.
But if the, if the federal, if FEMA opens back up on like the twenty-fourth, are we obligated to just give an answer on the twenty-fourth?
We would write to them and, and request an extension.
Okay.
That's why. And it does state in the workbook that FEMA sent us, and I believe I sent all of it to you.
Yep.
That, um, we can request an extension if we cannot meet the deadline for a yes or call.
So, Madam Supervisor.
Sure.
To that point, so here's the deal. Uh, I hate that I just had that sentence. Um, here. Here, here's the way I'm looking at it. So if we postpone the vote tonight, right? If the federal government opens tomorrow and we couldn't give them an answer, then that means that we lose the grant, then essentially the answer still to saying, no, we lose the money. But if we have the opportunity to amend it and potentially bring in some of these dollars. Uh, then that, that gives us more space and time to make a decision. So I, I guess the point I'm saying is it doesn't hurt us to postpone this. And using the federal shutdown to our advantage as opposed to it being a disadvantage in this situation.
That's a really good point.
Okay.
They still.
Logistically, I was proposing something similar, but.
Okay.
Justing that we vote on the six tonight. When things, should it go down, there's a no. I can still reach out to, we can still reach out to FEMA when things reopen and see if there's an opportunity to negotiate. And then if there is, we can call a special meeting. So it's me, it's the same outcome, very likely.
Okay, so well, I, I'll just, I'll make a motion to postpone the vote on this grant pending the federal government opening.
I'll second it.
Was there, was there already a motion on the floor? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're taking a vote on what's in front of us. She's the.
Oh, the question was when we first, we first opened it for discussion, so it would have to be a friendly amendment. Yeah, I understand. The question had already been called. I'm just saying.
Okay.
Yep.
So can we call the vote then? And then.
Doesn't sound like that would be a friendly amendment, but.
Okay, and then.
Wanted to make a determination.
We'll, we'll proceed is, is what I described. With the expectation that when the federal government reopens, that the chief and I will reengage with FEMA, will reengage with Debbie Dingle's office. And we'll work to see if we can get an amendment in the number of folks. And then should they say yes, we'll immediately call a special session to honor whatever that timeline is. Okay? Okay. Need to roll call, please, clerk?
Deveraux? So.
Ms. McKinney.
Can you repeat your motion?
Sure, just what's on the books.
Oh, okay. Uh, let me see.
Sorry.
Ms. Deveraux?
I got one more. Um, so do we, do we need to then make a friendly amendment? Can we? Can we make a friendly amendment to include what you just said? Around like the expectation that when the federal government opens, just so that's like on the record?
Oh, it's technically recorded in the minutes that we used.
Is that fine? Okay, I just wanna make sure that like from a documentation standpoint, we have it.
Yes.
Okay.
Make a.
I just wanna make sure from a documentation standpoint that it's documented so that we're.
I, I would.
Covering all our bases.
Put it as part of your, your amendment because I have to submit that to FEMA.
Okay.
Okay.
Whether we deny it or accept it, I have.
Fine enough, okay.
Great.
Would you?
So you're gonna repeat it, what you said.
Excellent. I would like to leave the resolution as it is. Then with the addition that when the federal government opens. Chief Shavat and I will immediately contact FEMA and contact Debbie Dingle's office to see if there's an opportunity to amend our award. To either two or three firefighters. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. That's part of the motion now?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there support for that?
Support.
Okay.
Ready for roll call?
Yes, please.
Deveraux?
Yes.
Deb Ashakine?
Oh, sorry.
Wait.
No, we're, I'm so sorry. No.
Wait.
Cause we're voting on the.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, we're voting as is with those.
That friendly amendment.
Right.
I understand how you got.
Friendly amendment. I apologize. No.
Yeah.
She's a no.
Okay. Deb Ashakine?
No.
Green?
No.
Lewis?
No.
McKinney?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Robinson? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to the two, three items that were walked on. Uh, clerks team, which one would you like to take first? Which resolution that was walked on?
Supervisor, what are we doing now? Are we going to this discussion items?
We're going through the walk down items.
The what items?
The items.
Oh, you said you put on the floor. Okay.
Can you read the title off, please? If, Ms., since this is, was rather last minute, could Mr. Smiley and Mr. Lucas please give some background to the board to see if we're comfortable voting on this tonight? Mister, would you, Smiley, would you please join us at the podium? Thank you.
Uh, this matter is a, uh, as I understand it, was resolution passed to acquire property owned by the Michigan Conservancy. Um, the property in question is, how many acres is, a hundred and?
One sixty-one.
One sixty-one point eight four acres.
Yeah.
It's, we call it the Birdsong property. Um, I spoke to, uh, Juan and the issue before, as I understood it, that the township was amenable to acquiring the property. But only on the condition that the township did not have to outlay any funds for, for, for the purchase of the property. The price of the property, uh, had. The price of the property had changed from the original numbers. I don't have the original numbers, but it went up about eighty thousand dollars from what we anticipated initially, seventy, eighty thousand dollars from what we anticipated initially. As a result of that change, I, I asked Juan to go back to all of the parties that had permitted or had indicated that they would be contributing towards the purchase of this property. All of the parties, with the exception of the city in Ann Arbor, confirmed their donations. The city of Ann Arbor said that they would not, because the price, the purchase price of the property had, had increased, they were only willing to donate enough to cover up to the, to what was the initial purchase price, which was one point six one nine.
One six one eight, yeah.
One eight, something like that. I was, but and now the price is one point six nine nine. I think it was one point one six one eight.
That's right.
So they indicated that they would only cover, cut, cover the, the, the balance between the, the grants that we had and the original purchase price of one point six one eight, which left a shortfall of approximately seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars there between the new price of one point six nine nine and the, the, and the commitments that we had for the grant money. We had a phone conference with Jack last week. In that conversation, I reiterated that, and so did Emily was involved in that also, that, that the township would not be moving forward with this until such time as we had a commitment for all of the funds necessary to acquire the property. I have no problem with the resolution as written because the resolution provides that the purchase is contingent upon us acquiring grant funds for all of the purchase price. And as long as we have that provision in the purchase agreement, I'm fine with it. But again, I would not suggest that we sign a purchase agreement until we have secured all of the funds for the full amount that is necessary for the purchase. So that's the resolution that you have in front of you.
And this only authorizes a purchase agreement to be signed under those conditions that you're.
Under those conditions, correct.
So can I ask a question?
Yep.
Red Bull, what happened if the extra money is not raised by the other funders?
We don't buy it.
That's not acceptable.
Pardon?
That's not acceptable. I mean, seventy thousand dollars, we have three hundred thousand dollars sitting in the legal defense fund, which was created for exactly this purpose. So I mean, if we need to cover some, we got the money for it.
I understand it, Ken, but that's a decision for the board to make relative to, to whether or not it wishes to expend those funds for that purpose.
Right.
All I know is that there was a resolution that was initially passed saying that we were not going to purchase it until
Until everything was.
All of the funds were available.
That was the verb.
From grant money. So if you want to redo that resolution, that's fine, but at this point, what we have is, is a resolution saying we have to have all of the grant money. And if we don't, then they'll have no authority to go move forward with the purchase.
Mr. Smiley, would you like to comment, please?
Yes, one clarification. There was never a purchase price established.
Okay.
Uh, what there was, where, where two appraisals were done.
That's right.
One appraised it at ten thousand an acre and one appraised it eleven thousand an acre. That was the discrepancy. And so even though I think we could justify the higher appraisal, we thought it was fair to just average the two appraisals. And the, the green belt had originally said that they would commit three hundred and eighteen thousand to it. But then after discussions with Juan, one way or the other, they said they would only do it at appraised value, apparently not realizing that there are two appraisals done. And so that was the discrepancy on their part. So we just need to go back and see if they will consider, because they are bound by their ordinance to not pay more than appraised value. The, in my view, as a real estate broker, I think the appraisal done by Gerald Alcock was more accurate as he was a local appraiser. And the other appraiser was from St. Clair County or wherever Marlette is. So I, I thought the local appraisal was a an equitable appraisal, a real, realistic estimate of value. And I think the, the averaging of the two was an appropriate thing to do. So we just need to go back. And the other problem is with the, the federal shutdown, our federal grant is in question. Because they're telling us now it may take four to six months to approve that, so we have to iron those problems out as well.
And just for the, the board's sake, can you share why you wanted us to receive this resolution this evening?
Then we can go to the city of Ann Arbor and see what they will respond.
Okay.
Based on the two appraisals.
I, I think I'd be happy with the resolution that's been presented. And then if it breaks down with the city of Ann Arbor, I would think that maybe we'd call a special meeting and make a determination whether the township would come up with the extra seventy some thousand dollars to purchase a hundred and sixty-one acres and amend the original.
I think, oh, sure, but I, I just want to butt in quickly. When I spoke with Mr. Smiley last, he shared that there would be no situation where that happens.
Well, I, I've committed from the start that I'd, I'd make sure that the township didn't have to spend any money from the general fund for this. So I'm hoping to fulfill that, but maybe there's some other options as well.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. Ms. Deveraux?
Yeah, I just had a, perhaps a minute question. Is it only grants that we can use, or can we also do donations?
We can use, donate any source.
Okay, any source. So it doesn't have to be only grant money?
No.
Okay, fantastic.
That's what I was my next question.
I can find somebody with it.
Well, I would say, you know, we had certain expectations built on the facts that, that were existing at the time that we approved everything. But material circumst, circumstances have changed materially. I would just like the board to keep in mind, the great additionist would be to township parks and for the really low cost of getting it like three hundred an acre or something like that.
I think the overriding problem has been the, the length of time it has taken. This has been over three years already. And we have substantial holding cost on this.
Shall we call the vote? Are we okay to vote on this? Or is there a motion?
Uh, that would be a motion to approve. This, uh, sorry. Motion to approve authorizing the supervisor to sign purchase agreements for the acquisition of the hundred and sixty-one point eight four acres for the Birdsong Nature Preserve. I just moved it.
Are we shall we call the vote?
Mm-hmm. McKinney? Schwartz?
Yes.
Robinson? Yes, Lewis?
Yeah.
Green?
Yes.
Deveraux?
Yes.
Deb Ashakine?
Yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. What would you like to take next?
Resolution authorizing the township supervisor to approve overtime for all departments excluding utility department, field service staff and union employees. Resolution number twenty twenty-five seventy-five.
Click it.
Discussion?
Yes. Would this authorize you to do, approve overtime for the treasurer's department and also the clerk's department?
Yep. Is it? This happened past practice, and it's something that we've not necessarily been following the guidelines on. But two, considering that I am responsible for managing the budget and being a steward of our, our township coffers, this is something important that I've shared with a few folks about and absolutely.
As other personnel policies, it says that it's done by department heads. The authorization of overtime, not just the supervisor.
Hey, this would be an override related to that. Okay. Any other comment?
I think it's a personally, I think it's an idea that you're doing this because.
Sorry. I think it's a good idea that you're doing this because you're keeping track of overtime because of the budget mainly, and there are some departments that we know will have overtime, and that's like the clerk's office and the treasurer's office. There's certain times that you guys will and do have overtime, but I think it's a good idea to keep track of it because of the budget. I don't think it's a bad thing. That doesn't mean you won't get it, but at least the supervisor will know how overtime is running.
We could still, our departments could still let her know what we're doing, but I think the clerk's office and the treasurer's department should be excluded from, from this resolution as well.
Okay.
And I would like to make the amendment, if we could, to the resolution to exclude our departments.
Is it important that we decide this tonight?
It doesn't have to be tonight. It's, it's been running for a while, right?
Because it.
I mean, it came on to the docket tonight, right?
Yes.
So, uh, you know, I have some, some concerns about separation of powers, to be honest with you. That one office would be able to control the budget, let's say, for the elections when there's the need for election workers and no overtime. It just creates a problem. So I think I'd like to maybe discuss this a little further. I, I don't think I'd be in favor of the supervisor having control of the overtime of the treasurer and the and the clerk's office on the basis of separation of powers.
Well, I think.
Ms. McKinney?
I think she should have powers with overtime in different departments, making sure that it's necessary for people in other departments to be using overtime for budget purposes, maybe not necessarily the clerk and the treasurer, but the rest of the township.
Yeah.
Ms. Lewis? So I'm sorry.
And then I agree with both, uh, what trustee Schwartz said, as well as what trustee McKinney said, but I certainly have to agree with what clerk Robinson said as well. And so I would be willing to take, I would be willing to take a vote on it tonight if we could make an amendment on this.
To exclude. What, what would you like the amendment to be? To exclude?
To exclude the clerk's department and the treasurer's department.
Ms. Deveraux, thanks. Um, so given, you know, given that this, the primary concern is between kind of the three departments of our full-time elected officials, I would be more in favor of punting this to a future meeting and having you all have some discussion because it did show up, you know, on the table tonight. So it'd be nice if you all were able to get aligned on it, like what works for you, maybe explain a bit more of your rationale and what you're trying to achieve. I'll vote on it however you like, but it seems like maybe having a little bit more discussion as a trio would be helpful.
Shall we table this for?
I'm sorry.
I think we should vote on it and not table it because we both the treasurer and myself feel that if we can get excluded from this, we are ready to vote on it.
Problem. Two, my concerns are, are similar to trustee McKinney's, and I think that it's difficult to manage a budget without an ability to look at proactively running of costs associated with overtime, but in a way that is thoughtful. To be able to track.
But our departments run differently. Like I do elections and there are late days that we will have to work. My ladies, my staff is here doing the board meetings, so that has to be all taken into consideration and.
Right.
That's.
So I feel like either the clerk's office and the treasurer's office should be excluded from this.
Mr. Green?
Yeah, so I hear all the points that have been made. And to the point about the three officials having more discussion on this matter. Based on what I'm, I'm seeing here tonight, I don't, I'm not sure if more discussion is going to resolve that issue. This, the second, the second thing, I mean, I, I do think it would be good practice for in the future for a resolution such as this that involves oversight regarding the three elected officials. That discussion take place prior to coming to the board table. With that being, with that being said, I have to say that I agree with trustee Schwartz. And then since regarding checks and balances and oversight and separation of roles, while supervisor, I understand your desire to track overtime and have that sense of the budget. I believe that these two women are more than capable of providing that. And I, I do think that with your collaboration amongst the three of you, that you all could come up with a system that would allow for that to happen and be able to navigate that concern moving forward. So if the amendment has been properly moved, I will second the amendment to exclude the clerk and treasurer. So that's, yeah, so.
I would prefer then that we withdraw this and rework it.
That's, I'm fine with that too. However, however.
I would prefer with, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw this item.
A second.
Motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I oppose.
I oppose.
The next one should be a bit simpler. This is let's see. A resolution to approve the updated overtime policy in the personnel manual. Ms. Rankin?
Yep, that would be resolution twenty twenty-five seventy-six.
Thank you, Ms. Rankin. Is there any discussion? Or is there a motion rather? There's a motion, I can give some additional background, too.
So moved.
Support.
Okay. This is related to the utilities texts and that are in field services that came to our budget working session. There were concerns over the communications and the way that the revised, really the new personal manual called out how their overtime would be pumped. And most, Ms. Burton, Ms. Mason, Ms. Deveraux and I took a look at what you see, and it's essentially going back to the exact language from the previous personnel manual and that it would give us enough coverage. Ms. Burton is comfortable that she would be able to provide her staff what they need. And we as a township would still have enough flexibility to maintain our current practices. So it's exactly word for word the same. It would say request to hold back and then have this supersede. Ms. Deveraux?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment that the intention of the revised manual was never to change this.
Absolutely not.
The intention was to simplify the language because there was so much like just overlap across the entire manual. We were attempting to make it clearer, and in that attempt, I think that it became less clear for utilities in particular. So I just wanted to apologize for that. That was in no way what we were trying to do. And I'm glad that we were able to get this revised and Nancy and I got on the phone to talk through it, and she was super helpful in figuring out exactly what was confusing. So big thank you to Nancy and to Mary for helping us get this right.
Yep.
Quick question for you, though. No impact on our utilities crews? Like, they haven't had any negative compensation impact as a result of the wording?
As far as I know, I made a clear to Ms. Burton that when she does their, you know, their payouts and we push that forward to Ms. Mason, that they're pumped exactly as they were.
Right. Just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
That was conveyed the day after the meeting. Shall we call the vote? Okay. All in favor? All right.
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Now, moving to discussion. Being mindful of the time too, and recognizing that there are opportunities to have working sessions and special meetings to do a deeper dive. We did have an interest in taking a look at the general fund twenty twenty-six target. This was a discussion that was provided for, popped up by Ms. Deveraux, and there was an interest from the board at our last working session. Is there a, a motion to have that discussion?
Yep, so moved.
Okay.
Sorry, I'll wait for a second.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Green?
Quick question. The general fund twenty twenty-six target discussion and then the, the cost of living adjustments, should that all be discussed as one item or? Uh, never mind.
I don't think it has to.
Yeah, this, this is go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we may be able to, we may be able to roll these into a budget working session.
I think so.
Um, I'm just curious when we might be targeting to have a budget working session? Um, I'm just curious when we might be targeting to have a budget working session?
I would aim to have it. I, I spoke with Ms. Robinson, but just after the election. So looking around like the fifth or sixth of November.
Okay, so that week.
Ideally.
November second, is that when the election is?
What day is the election again? It's the fourth, isn't it?
Yes, the election is November fourth.
On a Tuesday, right?
I'm sorry?
It's on a Tuesday?
Yes.
So it would be that week?
But I, I.
Towards the end of that week or the beginning of the.
So I will be in New York the week of November tenth.
Okay.
Um, so I would really like it if we could have.
Looking at some family time as well that week.
Yeah, either next week or the week, like towards the end of the week on the elections.
Understood.
Obviously, I'm not the only person.
Too. I, I just candidly, we've not, you know, ironed out a, a perfect target, but I just do think it's something for us to be aware of. So if there's a want to have a, a deeper dive and a discussion, the one thing I do want to articulate is that our general fund did see a more significant increase this year because of the pending sale, the anticipated sale and closing on the fifteenth of the, um, cell tower. And so that's why we're looking a little bit healthier than we might otherwise. And to want to flag that our state revenue share is expected to decrease by about fifty thousand dollars this year.
How much?
Fifty thousand. They recalibrated the. Mr. Schwartz?
So did the tower come to the board for approval?
Yes.
They came to us.
You know, I, I think that a lot of these under this discussion would be better off at some other session because we just throwing out topics, but we don't have much background here to, to parlay into some good and valuable fulsome discussion.
Sure, I agree.
You know, we'll just be banging off the walls.
I, I think it's good to have these items on everyone's radar. I do want to flag that for item D, and I'm, I'm moving around in maybe a way that I shouldn't. I did get some updates from county roads and I don't think it is enough to satisfy this board or the public. And I think that we can have a thoughtful working session around that and around what our expectations are. Um, and, and I see there is a request to have that review of the strategy. So that's C and D combined. And two, I think considering A and E during a budget working session might make quite a bit of sense. And so really the one that I, I do think we need to take separately today is discussion B.
Sure. Um, four, I think that makes a ton of sense. The, the thing that I, I want to make sure that we do is that we have a really good structured conversation in both of those working sessions, one on roads and the other on budget. So what would the board think of us like assigning a few of us to take the lead on designing those sessions? Cause I don't want to just show up and have read some documentation and have a bit of a, you know, free for all discussion. I'd like it to be a bit more structured and facilitated, especially for the roads one. Cause I think what they produced was not adequate.
I agree. I, I'm in favor of that.
Haven't seen it.
It's in.
It's in there.
It's in backup. Yeah.
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 No, no.
I think that's a great idea. Something that you'd like to organize right now or to get interest offline.
I don't know. What do people feel like?
What do you want to do?
Does anybody want to volunteer?
What's the question?
If we'd like to create metrics, a rubric, some sort of scale for how we might want to allocate roads funding, I would be interested in participating.
Yeah, how we want to like structure these working sessions so that we're really laser focused on goals, outcomes and accountability.
And to be clear, I'm sorry, I thought we were not just talking about roads. I thought we were just talking about the facilitation of, okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I agree with everything that's being said. I'm also just, excuse me. Related to comments that were made earlier, I don't want to overstep. This, this is, it would be a working session, it is a working meeting. So I would be interested in the, the clerk's department's input as to how we proceed with that moving forward. I would like to have that conversation in more detail offline potentially.
Okay.
Okay, cool. That sounds good. So it, it looks like the board may be satisfied with the discussions. A, C, D and F. Okay, and we'll work.
I'm sorry, you mean E?
I'm sorry. I have too many scribbles on my paper.
Are you talking about tonight?
Yeah, so it was side with those. The one discussion that I, I would like to see a motion on is B. Will somebody make a motion on that? Motion it?
Well, we don't need, you can just direct us. I mean, this has all been approved.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Um, something that I, I want to bring to the board that I wasn't comfortable making a decision on my own. Uh, it was brought to me by our planner was the waiver for Clay Hill Farm and market site plan review and escrow fees. There's a submission from Michelle Marin and then also some backup documentation. And so essentially there is a question around whether the board ought to waive approximately seven thousand dollars in fees related to different reviews that are, are going to be taken on in our standard with our, our planner and our building department.
May I ask a question?
Please, Ms. Lewis.
Okay. One of my questions is that seven thousand dollars, um, if it's waived, then where does it come from to pay who needs to be?
It would come out of the general fund for time.
Okay. The concern that I have is that one of the concerns that we continue to have is money coming out of our general fund. So that in itself is, I think, I'm gonna say it three times, is a concern. So, um, and you mentioned, you said seven thousand dollars, but I see up to twenty thousand dollars. So help me with that excess of thirteen thousand.
Michelle, our planner was ballparking the number of fees to get the project to the finish line.
Okay.
And what was before her most recently was the seven thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we have not paid fees for anybody in the past. Uh, library, other government units have always paid their, their fees and.
Yeah, and other nonprofits in the community.
Yes, I mean, all the nonprofits have paid in the, in the past. I'm really interested in getting him to a site plan because honestly, I don't know what's going on out there because we don't have a site plan. And things were put up that I know weren't approved, like the fence. And I know we've given some money, but I have no idea what the money that we spent, where did it go? Is it, we should, I think have an opportunity to sit down with TC and kind of discuss some things maybe this week to discuss like what would be a, a resolution of this?
I, I believe that Ms. Marin had been in touch several times with Mr. Collins. And I was able to catch up with Mr. Bradford on where the drawdown was on the ARPA funds for the project. I, I, I will say that my concern is generally I, I don't want to pick special projects to give unique circumstances and how that bodes for the board, particularly when we have a variety of nonprofits within our community. And so just so you know, Mr. Schwartz, um, in the background, there have been discussions. I think that Ms. Marin may have had some trouble, um, getting ahold of Mr. Collins and she'd also flagged that with Mr. Bradford.
I, I think if I may, we need a complete update with financials from Mr. Collins and how all the money has been spent.
Okay.
So that we know that it's been spent properly, which I'm sure it probably has, but you know, we have never received any kind of information about, uh, expenditures from, from the public funds.
Me, that's a separate question though. But I understand your concern. Ms. McKinney? I'm sorry, Mr. Collins.
Um, let me address, um, what Mr. Schwartz said about the fence. The fence was approved on the Clay Hill side, on the farm side without the site plan. So that was approved by the board. We did not put no fence on the MacArthur side because we are waiting on the site plan to be approved. We could not do anything on that because that was the last board that sit there and went over that part because there's two different sites that we can work on. We can only put the raised bids on the side of MacArthur and have a farm stand until the site plan gets approved. As far as the farm side, that was approved to put a fence on that side because we're not building any infrastructure on that side. That's how we got there.
I don't remember the board approving that, but you remember getting a, a, you got a violation notice from our planner regarding that fence.
Excuse me?
You got a violation notice from our planner about a year ago about the fence.
Okay, point of order.
No, we have not.
Point of order, point of order.
For Schwartz and Mr. Collins, if we could just, uh, I'm, I'm sorry for any tension, but if we could just keep it to the discussion around the fees being waived, is there anything that you would like to add?
Yes, because where we at right now is that we're right at crunch time because we're working with, uh, with Juan. And Juan has all the financials of what we had, had expended or our spending. And we're, um, following the, um, the proposal that we have submitted to the township accordingly. We have not spent extra and we have not spent under. So we're, we're diligently working with everything that we were allocated with.
Okay. Do you have any comments about the fees associated with the site plan?
Yes. Now, as far as the fees with the site plans, we did not expect to have those fees. We, when we submitted a proposal, because that's what we had requested at that time, we did not know that there was going to be fees associated with this part. And that's where we were caught off guard on that part. Because when we, um, the last administration asked us what was it needed to fund this project, we had submitted that part. But then when other fees started coming in after the resolution had taken effect of the proposal, we did not know about those fees. And then to come to the board to ask for X amount of dollars when it was already approved for what we was, uh, allocated for, we stayed in that scope. We cannot go out of side, that, excuse me, could not go outside that scope and ask for additional ARPA funding on only what we had asked for at our, as our proposal.
I, yeah, Mr. Bradford and I chatted about this this morning and he, he shared that with me and I think that he shared that the award was at a hundred and eighty-two thousand and the drawdowns have taken us now to one sixty-nine that are still in the ARPA account.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. So we stayed at our, um, benchmarks and we have not spent any extra money. Uh, we only put up the fence, we put up the lighting and we bought composts. But we have not used any other, other funding yet because that remainder goes on to where the site planned. And, uh, this board approved for us to amend the contract contingent on the USDA side. So we're almost on track.
Mr. Green?
So I'm, um, want to thank you for like bringing this item to the discussion for the board tonight. I don't feel like I have enough information to appropriately discuss it, um, and provide, uh, clear insight. Um, so is this, is, is it possible for us to discuss this at the next meeting?
I'm comfortable with that. Ms. McKinney?
Waiving fees for nonprofit, where would this put us if other nonprofits come and want us to waive fees?
I think it's.
I, I'm concerned with that. Uh, we have Trinity Health, we have a lot of nonprofits.
Garrett Space.
Garrett Space. And if they came to us wanting to waive fees.
That's just my primary concern as well as just having an equitable policy.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with everything that's being said. I just would like more information. So we have discussion in, in detail.
Well, we weren't going to make any decisions on.
Right.
Night, so, so, yeah.
Okay, well, we can bring it back next month then. Mr. Collins?
Is there a way that we can have, um, what you guys call a special meeting with Juan and I? So that way we can have more discussion with that because we're, we got, it's the holiday season's coming up in November and also in December, and we want to try and
Sure.
Get some type of questions answered.
Suggest that you, me, Mr. Bradford sit down and, and Ms. Marin, our planner, who I know had been working with you directly. And if the, a board member wants to join us, I think that that's a great time for us to join. But I, I don't think that we need a full working session for this, but we can figure this out with a couple of board members, a board member, and we'll get this on in November.
And then will this then be brought back though to another meeting to discuss whatever those smaller conversations were so that everyone hears?
I, I think that we can provide a, I can provide a synopsis.
Okay.
And make sure that's a part of the submission and the outcomes, and then we can take a vote on it.
I was just gonna say, I think the supervisor can take the lead on this and maybe structure some meetings to get the information that we need to make a decision on this.
I think so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, is there a, may we close the discussion then? Thank you, Mr. Collins. I'll, I'll be in touch with Mr. Bradford.
We need a motion to close the discussion.
Or we all? I, I don't think we do. No. All right. Now, now moving to bills for payment and records of disbursement. Fabulous.
Move the bills.
Is there a motion to move the bills of support? Okay, we have to do a little roll call? Green?
Yes. McKinney? Robinson? Yes, Schwartz?
Yes.
Davish Akain?
Yes.
Deveraux?
Yes.
Bills are paid. Moving to pleas and petitions. If there's any further public comment on any issue, um, either Ms. McKinney. Okay, Ms. McKinney, please.
Did you ever contact that company or the?
Yes.
About what, what was it?
People's Express.
No.
Aw.
The shreddy.
Thought.
Shreddy.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Need to remind myself. Thank you, Ms. McKinney.
You can contact, uh, Lisa from the Ypsilanti District Library.
Okay.
She has the information.
Thank you. Darn it, I thought we were synced.
No.
Okay. Anyone in the audience or online wish to make a public comment?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
This message is from Steph. I'm a resident to the Gettys Ridge subdivision. As Irma kindly mentioned earlier on Sunday, just after midnight, around forty shots rang out in my backyard coming from MacArthur Boulevard. Sadly, this is not an uncommon occurrence. In previous incidents, the culprits have fled into the woods surrounding the library, pursued by helicopter with residents of our sub advised to lock our doors. The lack of any lighting whatsoever in the Gettys Ridge sub is a serious safety concern when there is activity like this often happening nearby. Gettys Ridge has been victim to incidents like this in the past, including multiple vehicle thefts and two drive-by shootings. Randomly directed at houses in this usually quiet sub. The culprits are never identified or apprehended despite numerous witnesses, many of which provide security footage too dark to be of any use in an investigation. I look forward to seeing a comprehensive lighting plan next month that addresses these concerns respective to the Gettys Ridge sub. Thank you, trustee Green, for your persistence and advocacy on the serious issue and supervisor Davish Akain for proactively addressing the topic.
Thank you. And I, I just want to add in that, and I've talked with some constituents about this, but I've been working very closely with our sheriff and with the upper command, uh, in the county sheriff's office to work through footage, to think about interventions outcomes and how we're addressing the security of our residents in our surrounding neighborhoods and especially on MacArthur Boulevard. But this is a project that we've been working on, um, both through an intervention standpoint, a holistic standpoint in terms of quality life and also, you know, community safety, of course, but really trying to push all hands on deck. And, um, we've definitely got the attention of the county sheriff's office and they are bringing all their resources to the table. Thank you. Did you want to say something? Oh, no.
Thank you. Um, I'm not exactly sure if supervisor, this is a question for you or this is a question for the treasurer or if you will assign it to your assessor. I live in the Willerun School District and in the Willerun School District, we pay the highest taxes. Our mileage rate is the highest. And part of that reason was because of the twenty-five million dollar, it probably was more than twenty-five million dollar, um, debt, um, that was owed to Ypsilanti Community Public Schools. So what I would like for someone to do is to find out if and when or why not we do not have the adjustment to our taxes because a twenty-five million was forgiven this year or in twenty twenty-four. So I expect there to be some type of change. Um, go ahead.
I wanted.
No, that's good. No, I'm finished with that part. So you might have some good news, maybe.
Well, I'd just like to say that actually there was credit on the twenty twenty-four tax bills where it went down from thirteen percent to six point seven five.
Yeah. Okay, see I, that.
That was actually, so it's been a whole year now.
Okay, so.
There was not, there was not a, there was not a deletion of debt in its, in zero percent. I will say that. And I think that a lot of people had that perception that it was going to be zero percent. It was not. It went from thirteen percent to six point seven five.
Okay, so the, so they did make the adjustment, some type of adjustment. Okay, thank you. Cause I didn't, uh, all I'm doing is, um,
Cause I didn't, I, all I'm doing is, um, I didn't hear about it and I think, you know, next time we have a newsletter, it would be good to let all the residents know about that. Because if I didn't know it, I don't think anybody else knew and they'd be glad to hear it.
Well, there were people who knew because there were lots of people who came in because they saw it on their tax bills and
Okay.
They were very grateful and made all kind of
I look at how much I owe, so that's my fault.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, see, I don't read it like that. Okay, wonderful. Okay, so my last question is, and just a statement, is um, I had a resident and a resident should not come to my house. They just shouldn't. I mean, I don't mind all the residents coming to my house, but for her concern, it was, should have been something that was already addressed to the board. And this is a resident that lives behind eighty-three sixty-seven Glendale. Um, the gentleman there never cuts his grass. He just doesn't cut it for three hundred and sixty-five days a, a year. He takes his branches and he's building a wall adjacent to her house and he has big sycamore trees and if you know what a sycamore tree leaf looked like, it's about that big. He doesn't even rake them. So I do know that a letter was sent out, but
Sounds familiar.
But he took it, something in the front, he has a small front, he's, he's a corner house. She has rats. And I want all of you to imagine walking outside saying rats because of someone that doesn't do their lawn. Okay, the last thing, this very last one, Dolores Argo, and you should, I hope you remember her. Um, I hope you remember her. Dolores Argo sat here in the meeting in the former board, know who she was. She's one of those residents in her um, upper eighties that came in here and talked about property damage that was done by a contractor. She's not the only one. I could run off a, a lot of names. All of you need to address it. These are our residents. They live south of Geddes. They've been harmed and you need to not ignore it. Please don't. Thank you.
Thank you.